Councilmember Chua?
Here.
Vice Mayor Montana?
Present.
Present.
Mayor Tran?
Here. Okay, great. Thank you very much. And next up, we got the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you may. Pledge this evening begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay. And we'll go to the public forum here. Let's see if we have any guests this evening. Attendees, I want to welcome all our attendees and guests, members of the public. I want to say hi to our department directors as well. I know we have a really strong evening with our capital improvement program. And I love these type of meetings that bring us all together. So for a public forum, I'll go to see if there's any public comment, folks. Tonight's public comment will be one minute per person. Okay, let's see here. Let's see. Urbis Kubar Metta. And we'll get the timer going. Let's go.
Well, I wanted to mention about the capital improvement program. There are quite a few programs that's been currently, you know, being, you know, getting updated. One is the general master plan. Second is the task, which is the Milpitas metro plan. Third is the capital improvement program. And fourth one is the, the, the different architectures, you know, that's been, that's been being implemented within the city of Milpitas, becoming a, developing a Milpitas metro plan. It is important to evaluate that, that, you know, how this programs, which is being, which is being transpiring and as well as getting the development ready for the next phase. It is imperative that, you know, that so is the structurization of a government officials that be evaluated and that be implemented as well. And the right set of a law enforcement and as well as the order, you know, be maintained as well. Because as you know, more development is taking place, it is important that the city, which is becoming a metro city, it becomes a law implemented city, not the lawless city. And also, you know, to ensure that the right set of implementation being placed, you know, for the metro city.
Okay, next up, anybody else for public comment here? We're taking everybody and anybody. All right, going once, going twice. I don't see any further. Virtual raise hands, folks, if you're here for the CIP Agenda Item 1, the one and only, you can always raise your hand then and there. And so go ahead, let's go ahead and move forward here, move forward to announcements. Let me check in with our city manager, Steven McHers.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have any announcements for today's special meeting. Thanks.
Okay, great. Back to the other side of the days here. I just want to stop talking so much. Or do you want to say Happy Lunar New Year all across the world and here in Milpitas? Always great to celebrate. I always say this is kind of like the end of the holidays. You know, holiday season starts in September here in Milpitas. I know my Filipino family out there doing Christmas in September, as am I, as am I. And then we take it all the way through to now, which is February with Lunar New Year. It's kind of the holiday thing. No more New Years after February, so. I guess we're shining City Hall, kind of with a, no firecrackers, but with the bang. But I do want to give kudos to our Recreation Services Department, Public Works Department for shining City Hall like it is. Behind our city manager. It looks great and our residents really appreciate it. Look to my colleagues if there's any announcements. Always time for announcements. See any virtual raise hands? That being said, let's keep it moving here, folks. Let's go to our city attorney, Christopher Diaz, for the announcement of conflict interest and campaign contributions.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to ask the council and each, and the mayor as well, whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda. Just a thing to note for the council, this is the CIP program. Exhaustive list at all the projects, just to see if any of you live within proximity of any that could pose a conflict of interest. And I just wanted to note too, for the council, if they become robust discussions, because this is a study session, you have less concern about conflicts of interest. But if the council wants to get into a heavy discussion on any one of these topics, I would encourage the council members to potentially recuse themselves from that brief discussion. The two items are the Pines Parking Program, and I know Vice Mayor Montana has historically stepped out of that item. So if that gets into a heavy discussion, I'm happy to advise during that period of time, just to kind of step out. And then for, and then for the mayor, just the Midtown Specific Plan. I don't expect us to get into heavy discussion on any of these items, but just as a precaution. But I'll go down the road, just in case there's other conflicts of interest the council wants to disclose. Councilmember Fan?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Dominguez? Thank you. Councilmember Chua? Thank you. Vice Mayor Montana?
None.
Thank you. And Mayor Tran?
None. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you. And I will not ask the questions tonight about campaign contributions, because we have no third parties on the agenda tonight. But Mayor, if you'd like, I'd go ahead and move on to the code of conduct.
Please.
So go ahead and reading that out loud for the council. Be respectful and courteous. Words, tone, and body language do matter. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the council dais. And as I've indicated in the past, that includes our platform today on Zoom. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. And finally, the council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. All right, moved on here to approval of agenda, a motion to approve. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
We got a second by Vice Mayor Montana. All in favor, virtual call, Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chua?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montana?
Aye.
Myself and I, the motion is carried and the agenda is approved. And that leads us to the star of this evening, Agenda Item Number 1. Let's receive presentation on proposed 2226 Capital Improvement Program and provide feedback to staff. I'm going straight to our city manager, Steve McHers.
Thank you. Tonight, actually, the star is going to be our city engineer.
Well, it wasn't a person, it was the item. It's always the item, remember, always.
All right. So second, second to none is, is I think Steve Erickson, he is here with us to take us through this program. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Can I have the presentation, please? So tonight, I'm pleased to present the proposed five-year 2022 to 2026 Capital Improvement Program. Can't believe it seems like we just did this, but it's been a year already. Next slide, please. So the agenda for tonight, we'll take a quick look at the timeline for the CIP. I'll mention the engineering's accomplishments this last year, our proposed work plan, just the highlights of those. Then we'll get into the, the meat of the item tonight, which is the five-year capital improvement program. And then our Recreation Director, Renee Lorenson, will give an update on the girls' bobby socks softball field item, followed by a recommendation. Next slide, please. So tonight, February 11th, here we are, the first study session of the proposed CIP. The first of March, we anticipate bringing the doc, the park section of the document to the Parks Recreation Cultural Resource Commission. Then around the 10th of March, we will bring the document to the planning commission for the review and a finding of the plans conformance with the general plan. And then we hope to bring the final CIP document back to the city council for consideration and adoption in early April. Next slide, please. So our capital improvement program is in conformance with the council's adopted budget priorities, which you've seen these before. Next slide, please. So let's go into the accomplishments that engineering completed this last year. Next slide, please. So under community improvements, for instance, these are projects that will be completed. Some are already completed. The rest will be completed by the end of June of this year. So the first one, our engineering and finance staff have been working hard since this last November, transitioning the city's capital improvement program to the new open gov software in order to present the document for you tonight. We also completed demolition of the old fire station number two building and completed construction of temporary station facilities and preparation of construction of the new project. Park improvements. So we completed the interior renovation portion of the Alviso Adobe project. And we are now starting the audio and visual media and exhibit portion of the project. We completed the sports center concession and restroom building. And the engineering department completed the renovation of Creighton Park. And it was completed last December. We are also working on update of the park and recreation master plan. And we completed a construction of the Milpitas Skate Park. Next slide, please. Under street improvements, we completed construction or construction of the pedestrian bridge over crossing Montague Expressway and Piper Drive is anticipated to be completed in April. We are also in the construction phase of the enhanced crosswalk beacon and speed feedback signage project. Engineering completed the traffic signal at Sandisk and McCarthy Boulevard. And we relocated a traffic signal cabinet located at the fire station number two site in preparation of building demolition and again, construction of the new station, which has started. The 2020 street resurfacing project is currently in construction, or actually will start construction in March. And the update to the trails, bicycle, and pedestrian master plan is also underway. Lastly, for water improvements, we completed drilling of the mechanist potable water well. And this next fiscal year will begin the, the surface improvements for that facility. Next slide, please. So I will pause at some of these great accomplishments that engineering completed this last year. So we have the skate park there on the left-hand side, as well as the new Sports Center Snack Shack and restroom, restroom facility. I'm really, really proud the way that, that building turned out. Next slide, please. Here's the renovation of Creighton Park, which engineering completed. We put in a new restroom building, or actually a restroom building that did not exist prior, as well as updated play equipment and a current compliant playground facility. Next slide, please. Here's the temporary fire station facility on the left-hand side, as well as the, the cleared site for fire station number two. Again, that contractor is, has started with the foundation for the new building. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Mechanist well drilling operation, which occurred last summer. Next slide, please. Here is the completed interior restoration of the Adobe. Next slide, please. The pedestrian over crossing at Montague Expressway and Piper Drive. Again, this will be completed. We anticipate opening around April of this year. Next slide, please. The traffic signal at McCarthy Boulevard and Sandisk Drive. Next slide, please. Street resurfacing and the signal cabin I mentioned at, at the fire station number two site was relocated and upgraded to a new current facilities. Next slide, please. The enhanced crosswalk beacon and radar speedback signage project that's currently under construction. Next slide, please. Now we'll look at our work plan highlights for this next fiscal year. Next slide. So some of these projects are already underway and others we anticipate starting in 2021. And it's a pretty good sized list. So under community improvements, we're looking at an update to our city standard details, guidelines, and engineering specifications. And these would be for not only the capital improvement program, but also private development projects within the city's right of way. For park improvements, we're looking at starting a design process for the Tango Sub District Park and also purchasing land for that park facility. Under street improvements, we have a plan line project for Costa Street. We'll be looking at additional pedestrian over crossing facilities, VTA light rail platforms. We'd be looking at partnering with the city of San Jose for the resurfacing of Landis Drive from Piedmont Road to Highway 680. Engineering would also look at starting a roadway signage inventory. So this would be the regulatory signage to document what we have and the age of those facilities and confirm if they are meeting current state standard. We'll also be starting the resurfacing project for 2021, as well as investigating the Curtis well that exists, but investigating, bringing that online. Next slide, please. Canadian, for community improvements, we'll be looking at continuing with the construction of fire station number two that we anticipate being completed in 2022. Park improvements, again, we'll finish the Alviso Adobe exhibit and media installation. Mechanist Park, we anticipate starting construction on that this next fiscal year, as well as continuing operations or work with the, on the Sports Center master plan update. We're also looking at completing a project for the widening of Mechanist Drive for down near Montague Expressway, which is actually being constructed by a contractor for the school district. And again, I mentioned the street resurfacing project and the traffic signage inventory project. Next slide, please. So projects that will be, again, completed by next June 30th, 2022. The automated water meter replacement program, the assessment to Curtis well, Mechanist well facility design, which is the above-ground facility. And for sanitary sewer, we're looking at a project to install flow meters on the main forest main pipelines to, that head to San Jose. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we're going to look at the, the meat of the tonight's item, which is the five-year capital improvement program. Next slide, please. And I believe you all have a copy of the proposed book, and it's changed. I think you've seen a little bit this year. It layout is similar to previous programs. But again, we transitioned to the open gov software system. This, this system integrates the, the CIP and the operating budget in one process. Staff update project information, status, descriptions, financing, and other data. A lot more user friendly. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, so table of contents. So the new document includes a grand summary. The six CIP category sections, which are capital improvement, or I should say community improvements, parks, streets, water, sewer, and storm drain. And we also have a new section, which are projects that are beyond the five years. So these aren't funded projects, but they're what we're tracking and tracking costs for those. And we'll get in more of that later. Next slide, please. So if you want to follow along with your CIP book, the grand summary is on page 11. And this looks very similar to what, what I've shown in the past. Includes project expenses for five years by their category, which are at the top, community improvements, park, street, water, sewer, and storm. It has five fiscal years. Only the first fiscal year, 2021 to 22, is the funded year and funding begins July 1. The other years are planned years. Some of those projects are funded, some are not. The slide also shows the total funding sources, which are city internal funding sources. It shows the external funding sources, which in this case, we have two. It's grants, reimbursements, which is one item, and the other is sanitary sewer bonds. The bottom of the grand summary shows a line called no funding. And this is the, the amount of projects, or the estimated cost that we do not have funding for. If that makes sense, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Next slide, please. One big change of the project sheets. And so in the past, they were, we crammed a lot of information on one sheet. We were missing a lot of nice details. We've broken each project out into two sheets now. The first page will show the project name, the project number. It'll have specific details on the category, the council's priority, project location. Might have an image or a map or a photograph. The managing, the managing department, the contact persons will also include the project stage, such as, is it a design or construction? An estimated project schedule. And if, if it's a reoccurring project, from since like the street resurfacing is a reoccurring project that happens every year. The first project paid, or first project page will also include a description of the project and any notes that pertain to the project. The second page of each project sheet includes the uncommitted balance, which is funds remaining in the project from a previous funded year. It'll include the date the project was added to the CIP. It'll include the estimated cost over five years, as well as the funding source and any finance notes. And at the bottom of the second page, it'll have an operating impact. Next slide, please. A new section that was added, and this is page 349 to 352 in your CIP. These are projects that aren't funded, they're planned, but they're beyond the five years. So they might be six years to 10 years. Again, it's a new section. It'll include a brief project description, an estimated cost, and the date it was added to the CIP. And this section is broken out into each of the categories. The image on the slide is just for the community improvement portion of that section of the book. Next slide, please. Okay, so for the five-year estimated cost summary, we have 132 projects are in the program. The total estimated cost over five years is 210 million. However, a big chunk of this is with, is not funded, I should say, has no funding. And that's 70, $70 million of the 210 is not funded. We don't have funding for it. Next slide, please. So this is slide shows the internal and external funding. So this is funding sources that we do have. So we have 140,496,649 dollars of funding available for projects. So that's 140 million of the 210 from the previous slide that we can fund. So we can fund about 66% of the projects in the capital improvement program. Next slide, please. So this slide kind of is a five, a summary of the five-year funding. So starting at the top left, you've got the estimated project cost going across for each of the five years. And there, the total on the left is the 210 million I mentioned. The next line down is the internal funding source, and it totals 137. So this is, shows the funding that we actually have for each fiscal year. So for 2122, the internal funding is 19.6 million of the 22.2 million estimated project cost, which is just above. Then we have an external funding source, which I mentioned before, is either grants, reimbursements, fees, and also it'd include any bonding for this year. The bottom line is the value of no available funding. So for fiscal years 2223, you'll see that we have about $8 million of funding that is needed to be able to complete the total estimated 44.8 million dollars of projects shown at the top of column 22-23. So at the end of five years, the total amount of unavailable funding is 70.1 million dollars. Next slide, please. So for fiscal year 2122, this slide shows the estimated cost summary. So fiscal year 2122 starts this July 1. This is the funded year. So there's a total of 33 projects that are funded. 13 in community improvements, four in parks, nine streets, four in water, three in sewer, and zero projects in storm. And the total estimated project cost for fiscal year 2122 is 22.2 million dollars. Next slide, please. So kind of a summary of, of funding for each of the, the six CIP categories. The second column is the estimated cost for 2122, and that's totals the 22.2 million I've mentioned. Neat. None of these categories are funded currently with any reserve monies. They have a value or an amount of general government fund, funding shown there in the column to the right. So for instance, community improvements, it's proposed at 2.69 million dollars of general fund money is proposed. And it progresses down 70 million, 70,000 for parks, 350,000 for streets. So a total of 3.11 million dollars of general government fund money is proposed to be used for the CIP this fiscal year 2122, starting July 1. Next slide, please. So here are the 11 projects that are proposed to be funded this next fiscal year from general government funding. So I'll just pause here for a second. Next slide, please. So this slide is, kind of shows where we are with the general government funding over the last five years, starting in 2016, 17, up to today's proposed CIP. So there at the, the far left in 2016, 17, the CIP document at the time had a value of general government funding of 4.78 million dollars. It peaked in 2017, 18, progressed down last year, which is fiscal year 2021. The CIP document had a general government amount at the beginning of 7.78 million dollars. However, we deferred 5.67 million of that to offset the general fund deficit last year. So we had, that, that left us with 2.11 million dollars of general fund money that went to the CIP this last year. This year, again, we're proposing to use 3.11 million dollars for this, for the CIP, and it would be again, general government fund monies. Next slide, please. So these next two slides are the projects that will be funded this, the next fiscal year. And these slides can be seen in your CIP book on pages 19 and 21, or 19 through 21. I'll pause for a second. Next slide. Next slide, please. Okay, and our, for the capital improvement program, this year, we're proposing two new projects. One is the administration of the capital improvement program, which funds staff time of the engineering department and finance department staff in creating the book. It funds the printing of the book and also software programming assistance. The total estimated project is 385,000 to be funded in fiscal year 2122. Funding sources are through the general government CIP, task impact fees, water, capital surcharge, and sewer infrastructure fund. We're also proposing a new street resurfacing project in the fifth year, year 2526. Again, provides the roadway improvements rehab, as well as overlay. This is a 2.5 million dollar project funded through gas tax, measure B, SB1, and vehicle registration. Next slide, please. So now we'll look at the section of projects with no available funding. Next slide, please. So economy and general fund forecast. So it's discussed last January, the city council budget study session, fiscal year 2120, 2021, mid-year general fund rebalancing recommendations are going to be for. Fiscal year twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two-one mid-year general fund rebalancing recommendations are going to be forthcoming on the sixteenth of February to close the current projected net revenue shortfall of approximately fourteen million dollars. And it'll include savings related to project referrals. Projections indicate several years of annual general fund deficits. So it'd be seven point four million for this next fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Four point one two million in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three and an estimate two point five three million in fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four. The ongoing structural deficit is approximately four million dollars. As I've mentioned before, the general fund is not sufficient to address all ongoing repair and upkeep of city infrastructure, which is the buildings, storm drain system, parks, et cetera. Staff will continue to review staffing levels, positions and project funding and adjust these resources as required to benefit the general fund. Next slide please. So projects that were defunded and deferred, so last year we defunded twenty projects in order to save about five point six seven million dollars, which was used to address the general fund shortfall and to a fund essential city projects. This year, four of these projects are proposed to be refunded and these four are shown below. So it's fire station maintenance improvements, the police department's ALPRS security cameras. The police and fire mobile emergency operations center. And a project that continues maintenance and repairs of city sound walls and barriers. Next slide please. So as mentioned earlier, we have a total of seventy point one million dollars of the CIP that we cannot fund. There's no funding available. And so the breakdown is shown in the four fiscal years above. Next slide please. So we need have seven point, seventy point one million dollars of funding that we can't afford in the next fiscal year. However, beyond the five years, we're anticipating a need of a hundred and seventy-one point six million dollars in funding that's needed for projects. These projects are in the back of your CIP book, pages thirty, forty-nine to three fifty-two and they're listed. Here's an example of some of these below for community improvements. Fire station number three is a project at twenty point three million dollars that we currently do not have the funding for. There's a project to replace the training and OES facility portable building at fire station one. We don't have the funding for that, plus performing arts center. Public works and police department facility improvements that I mentioned last year. And a community center building assessment project, next slide please. For park improvements, there's thirteen parks that are in need of renovation and the estimate for these is forty-four million. One of these projects is the park renovation at Sandalwood Park. The design's completed, but we're going to have to shelve the design as we don't have the funding for construction. We need three point three million dollars for related street projects. Under sewer improvements, there's a sanitary sewer force main replacement that's estimated at twenty-five million. And there's three storm drain pump stations that were constructed back in the nineteen fifties. They're going to be in need of renovation or replacement. The estimate for these is nineteen million. And these projects are all beyond the five-year CIP. Next slide please. So at this point, I'm going to hand off the presentation to the recreation director, Renee Lorenson.
Thank you, Steve, and good evening, mayor, vice mayor and city council members. So I'm going to go through slides tonight to give you an update on the Bobby Sox softball fields and some potential options moving forward. Next slide please. So just some brief background, as you all know, the city and the school districts entered into a joint use agreement for the use of the Russell Middle School fields for a Bobby Sox complex. Those agreements were established in nineteen ninety-seven with an update in twenty-ten. In twenty-eighteen, the Milpitas Unified School District did pass a bond measure that included the replacement of athletic fields that affected or will affect the Russell Middle School fields as we know it. Renovations through this bond measure would add a new track facility, multi-use fields and would leave two softball fields. The school district in response to the change of use of this area has requested an amendment to the current joint use agreement to reflect those change of amenities and public program accessibility. At the August fourth council meeting, council directed staff to work through the city school collaborative subcommittee to develop options for a new location for girls softball. And staff has been meeting with the school collaborative, the city school collaborative, school district staff and leaders of PALS softball over the last few months on potential locations in Milpitas. Next slide. So we did look at several locations owned by both the city and the school districts. The locations were evaluated based on the improvement feasibility and the current amenities that were closest to the existing conditions at Russell Fields. The existing conditions and amenities they have access to right now are four regulation softball fields and bleacher seating. They have a snack shack with attached restrooms, storage as well as parking at the site. So the locations that we evaluated were a Palmeroy Elementary School and Russell Middle School combination, Rancho Middle School, Gill Park, the Future McCamless Park, the Sports Center Fields, Cardoza Park and Dixon Landing. After meeting with the Bobby Sox leadership as well as the school district, three locations out of those were shortlisted for further evaluation. And on January twenty-ninth, staff presented three preferred site locations to the city school collaborative subcommittee. Next slide please. So I'm going to go through the three slides and I'll do my best to orient you as some of them include, include improvements that make it a little bit hard to see where you're at. But what you're looking right now is an aerial of Esquela Parkway on your right-hand side. In the black hashed line is Russell School. What you're seeing is the field design and amenities that go along with the twenty-eighteen bond project. So you'll see two softball fields as well as the multi-use field and track. On the left-hand side, you will see Marshall Palmeroy School. You'll see two field diamonds, which would be potential improvements at the field area behind the elementary school. This project would also add a shade structure with power to add as a snack shack. Those two fields, there is existing parking at this elementary school and then restrooms would be accessible as part of the existing school facilities. Although this project does incorporate the current Russell Field area, there were some concerns from the Bobby Sox group about logistics between the two sites and walking back and forth for prep and games for families with multiple children in one family. The early and preliminary estimate cost of this project would be one million forty thousand dollars. Next slide please. The next area we looked at was Dixon Landing Park. This is the space, there are four existing fields, there's an existing snack shack with restroom attached and storage in the parking at the bottom of the slide, as you can see. This project would include reskining the four existing fields into four regulation softball fields. This would also include keeping the largest field, which is the senior field as multi-use for both softball and potentially baseball in the off months. The early estimate of this project is nine hundred and two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Next slide please. The last concept is Cardoza Park. So this looks the most different from the way the park looks now. If you look at the screen, the top right-hand corner, that is the existing parking lot on the east side of Cardoza Park. You'll see on the opposite side is the existing parking lot and the playground right below it. And then you can kind of see the existing diamond as it is, there's one softball field out there now. And then towards the bottom of the screen is the pathway where you would walk by the Little League fields and towards the sports center. So what this option, as it was presented, would take the one softball filled area and add created two-field option along with a new storage container and dedicated snack shack. As well as one small field, you can see on the right-hand side, the one hundred yard, one hundred foot diamond. And then also use of the new concession stand and additional restrooms at the Milpitas Sports Center. The cost of this, the early estimate for this option was two million forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Next slide please. So when we took these options and designs to the subcommittee, they gave us some direction. The first direction was to bring this option back to the city of Milpita City Council to add Cardoza Park softball fields project to a future CIP when funding became available. Cardoza was the preferred option. They also directed staff to evaluate options for four fields at Cardoza Park or the conversion of a Little League T-ball field in addition to three fields at Cardoza and to also identify an interim location solution for softball until the Cardoza Park project could be completed. Next slide. So with that direction, staff did look at Cardoza Park with both the three field and a four-field option. So what you're looking at here is the current Cardoza Park with three fields, all regulation size. You'll see the largest field on the lower left-hand of the current diamond. There's a smaller one, a two hundred foot and then a one hundred and seventy-five foot option. You can see in the green circle to the right of those fields that there is a existing picnic area that would be, would remain. And then just below that, you can see the Little League field sort of poking out there. On the left-hand side, you can see the words convert T-ball to multi-use. That is T-ball for the youngest Little League players. That could also serve as a softball field area for the minis, which is a three to six-year-olds. Next slide please. Along with the consultant, we did look at four-field option all on Cardoza Park. So that is this option here. There is the opportunity to have four fields, there is some encroachment into the parking lot, which would take further assessment. But there is the potential to have all four regulation fields, which serves all the girls ages down to the three to six-year-olds in one park location and it would not require use of the T-ball field for Little League. Next slide please. So what does a project timeline look like for renovating Cardoza Park for fields like this? So the planning and outreach phase, that would be continuing to work with our stakeholders and neighborhoods, things like that, just on the project itself. That's in the, that's a six to nine month process. Then there would be the design, taking those plans and those concepts to construction design, that's another nine to twelve months. The construction itself takes about a year to a year and a half, that's twelve to fifteen months. Excuse me, taking the designs to construction is about twelve to fifteen months. And then to open the fields, we're looking at up to thirty-six months, start to finish. Next slide. So the, following through the last direction from the subcommittee, the interim solutions. Russell Fields are available and ready for use for the twenty-twenty-one season. We anticipate that they will have use of those fields and complex until planned construction for the MUSD Bronn project, which they estimate starting in June of twenty-twenty-one. After that time, the Dixon Landing Park fields are available for the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two season and beyond. There would require some minor improvements to the existing fields, which include to skin the infield, add base pegs to the senior fields, which we are able to incorporate and use the approved turf rehabilitation public works CIP project for. The cost of that is about a hundred and hundred thousand dollars. And just as a reminder, there is an existing snack shack, storage and parking at this site. Next slide. So for council discussion on this topic, we are seeking direction from you on the interim and long-term locations for girls softball fields. Your project field options preferred, a three-field at Cardoza or four-field at Cardoza. And then discuss the timing and funding considerations for the associated capital improvement projects. And I'll turn it back over to Steve, thank you.
So to conclude the CIP presentation, again, I'm going to end with the grand summary page that you have in your CIP document, which is page eleven, looking at funding thirty-three projects this next fiscal year, which starts July one. Funding amount is twenty-two million, six hundred and fifty-seven, six hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. The funding, the available funding totally in the CIP over five years is a hundred and forty million. The no funding amount over five years, we're going to have to determine how to fund projects is seventy point one million. And again, we're looking at adding two new projects. Next slide please. So again, the timeline tonight is February eleventh, it's the council study session on the CIP. In March, we'll look at bringing the CIP document to the PR CRC for review of the park section. And then the planning commission for review of the CIP document for conformance with the general plan. And then we hope to bring the CIP document back to the city council for consideration and adoption in April. Next slide please. So again, that concludes the presentation and in addition to the questions from Renee on the softball field, the recommendation is to receive presentation of the proposed five-year CIP and provide direction to staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Erickson, for presenting the proposed CIP this evening. Just don't really have too many words this year. I think we all know where we're at in terms of our city's finances, our local economy and the recession. So I'm very grateful for the funding that we do have, which meets really the essential needs of our community, street resurfacing and things like that. And so I think we are very blessed as a city to have what we have. And there are no grave concerns whatsoever, not even close. And a lot of times I think we all watch the news across America, other cities and they're unable to fund their basic projects. And so I'm very humbled for our city to be able to fund all the necessary projects that we need. I hope it's a short meeting tonight before I go to my colleagues here. I know in the past, we have kind of dove into a longer list of projects, but this year it's really about quality. One more thing before I go to my colleagues, or actually public comment as well. About the softball fields. I have the great honor of serving on the school district city subcommittee with our vice mayor, Carmen Montano. And we did meet with the school board members that are appointed to the subcommittee. And I think we had a pretty good meeting and kind of went over the current state of softball fields and what we're going to do going forward. And the vice mayor and I agreed together that the Cardoza site would be most ideal for our young people here in Milpitas to carry on the tradition of our student athletics. There is a cost. I want to thank our city staff for putting forward all the information to this point with that proposed site. And there is a cost, but I think that it'll be of great value with that cost, these proposed new fields at Cardoza. And so I hope that's the route that the council will go with tonight to go with the Cardoza site. And it was pretty interesting to see tonight, it was updated presentation about the proposed softball fields, the four fields that are together. I think when the vice mayor and I looked at it initially last time, it was three fields, so that's another positive. You know, let's go to the public comment, let me take care of public comment real quick and I'll go to my colleagues here. And we have a virtual race. And we have a virtual raised hand, folks, all our attendees, if you're here tonight.
Thank you very much again. I think I wanted to mention about the park updates. There are 36 parks within the city of Milpitas. And as Milpitas is growing, there's definitely going to be more parks. But specifically with respect to the softball field, it is important that along with the softball field, there are also a baseball field, you know, that is required to be created, that is required to be developed as well. Also, it is important that, you know, along with the softball, to keep in mind that, you know, to evaluate that, you know, it is not only going to be women's softball field. It's also required to be a man's softball field and right set of segregation is required to be done. And it is also important that, that when any park that is being built, it is to be built accordingly with respect to keeping the men and women's, with keeping the men and women both playing the sports with a consideration. It is also important to make sure that, you know, these parks are being maintained as well.
Continues, public comment continues, folks. If you're here on the Zoom this evening, welcome to tonight's Milpitas Special City Council meeting. We are going over the proposed capital improvement program for the years 22 to 26, which is five years total. All right, folks, thanks for tuning in. That's it with public comment. That's it. That's it. Okay, going back here. Alrighty, I'll look to my colleagues, always great to go through this part of the year as we approve budgets and CIP budgets and budgeting. So here we are, Councilor Fan.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I just wanted to commend staff on the presentation. I know they worked really hard to prepare for this and would just like to say that I support the recommendation for it to be located at Cardoza. I'm fine with that suggestion.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Fan. I'll follow up really quick here. I want to make sure I provide as much feedback as possible for our city staff and to add this softball project to the CIP. Obviously, we'll need the funding. And so the softball field proposed project will be really dependent on the year, whatever year it may be where we have funding. But I do want to note for the record that I would love to see this project put in year two or three to start off with. And then I think our city council can debate it going forward, however many years. I'd rather see this softball proposed project go on year two or three than to have it on year five. Just kind of one of those kind of unwritten or unsaid type of advocacy or lobby for the project, if I may. Okay, great.
Mayor, just, I didn't want to interrupt the council's discussion on this, but I do see a raised hand and I know that in this public comment, but just wanted to note that for you.
Okay, great. Yep, yep. Thank you so much. Great eye. Okay, let's go to public comment. We have Rosie, welcome. And yeah, I think once your microphone is unmuted, IT can help us out here. We do see you and we're going to, to you. And so, let's see, okay, that's okay, I know you're there, we're here. So go ahead, public comment. Okay, IT maybe, okay.
Mayor, she needs to update the Zoom.
Oh, you know what? Thank you so much, IT. Yeah, Rosie, I know you could probably hear me, but you know, this Zoom, you have to have, you got to update it to the most recent version. And you know, I think a lot of people, they call in and they don't have the updated Zoom. So we're unable to kind of connect, if I may say. So Rosie, what you can do is it's all good. We're not going nowhere. Here's what you can do. I think maybe go to your Zoom and update it on one of your options. Maybe turn off the Zoom, turn it back on and update it. We're going to stay here and we'll be here for you when you come back with the update Zoom. I hope you can hear me. In the meantime, I do want to keep it going. I see another virtual raised hand. Let's go to Tina Ortiz.
Good evening, council. This is Tina, the president of Powell Softball. I'm kind of appalled, being first time presenter, that I seen that it's going to be up to two to three years before we can have access to replacement fields. And I do appreciate the city has a backup plan, but it does make me highly concerned with planning for the next coming years on where we're going to be, how it's going to be done. Because we don't have a resolution in mind. I mean, there is, there's some ideas, but there's no concrete. And so I mean, that just causes a little bit, a lot of concern for me as the leader of the organization. And then financially, I know there's a lot of things that need to be updated, even at Dixon. But I hope we come to some conclusions soon.
Thank you very much, Tina. Now I feel the pain. I, I wish it was more seamless. You know, the year that our school district is spending their bond money to build, upgrade the facility back there is the same, you know, time period where where our city is going through a recession is, and it's like, it's just, you couldn't draw it up any worse than what it is. I, it's going to be a challenge for our softball program to have temporary home, kind of a transition home. I remember when I was a senior at Milpitas High School playing football. And that's when they replaced the old dirt, the old dirt football field at the high school and the, and the track, the old track with the, and I don't know what that was, but we were running in it. But we had to, our senior year, we had to walk across the street to Russell, it's where the softball fields are right now. And we practiced there, you know, for a whole year. And we had to walk over there and walk back and it was just a hassle. And so I'm going to be very open and say that, you know, it's going to be a hassle. But we've got to really look ahead at the opportunity we have and the beautiful fields. I think that can be at Cardoza with full facilities and just everything. So, but no, I'll be the first to tell you, it's going to be a hard one. Okay, let's go to Rosie. Okay, hopefully this works. All right, Rosie, we're trying. I'm not sure if you tried to update your Zoom. Okay, well, you know, we're going to go back to the city council here, but if Rosie, you're able to connect, we're going to get you on here. All right, great. Appreciate it, IT. We're doing our best. Shout out to IT. Thank you, IT. Our executive secretary as well, for making sure that we're doing all we can to have a seamless meeting here on Zoom. And so I think it's our 12th month here on Zoom. We started Zoom, what, March 17? Now it's going over some old agendas, yes. So yeah, we're almost, almost a year on Zoom now. Okay, back to the city council here. I want to thank Councilmember Fan for providing the input. And I'll look to the rest of my colleagues. It doesn't have to be about the softball fields necessarily. It could be, but you can talk about anything you want. Okay, here, let's go. We got the virtual raised hand here from Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for the time. I just have a couple of questions in regards to the softball fields. I definitely understand the financial situation that the city is in. However, I do want to understand a little bit more of the original MOU that was signed by the school district. And I was wondering if that's available for us.
Councilmember Dominguez, we do have a copy of the contract and we're happy to provide that to the council.
Okay, my concern is just, I'm trying to figure out what the original MOU and the original agreement was. And I don't know, maybe I'll just ask the question and if staff knows. But does the original agreement have any inter use? For example, that we're going to provide X in order for the softball field to be used by, like, what's the specific language? Because I haven't seen it and it wasn't in the pocket. So just wondering if someone could help me understand what the original agreement was for use for the softball.
I'll speak lightly to it and then maybe others maybe want to chime in. And I'm happy to pull up the agreement while I think others talk. My recollection from the agreement is it's an agreement between the city and the school district for use of the fields. My understanding is some funds may have been spent by the city to either update the fields or initially be involved in. There's a term that runs till 2036. But the language is basically that we work cooperatively together with the school district and those fields are available for us to use for the duration of the term.
Thank you. Does anybody know the original money amount that was allocated from city funds to enhance the field?
Renee or Steve, I don't know if you have, Councilmember Dominguez, we'll get that to you if we don't have it now. We made, the city actually invested in the snack shack and the restroom. So that was the city's contribution towards, you know, towards kind of into that JUA for the use of those fields after the specific time every day and on the weekends. We'll get to that if Renee or Steve Erickson don't have that information. We'll follow up with them.
Not a problem. Thank you. I'm just, I'm a little concerned on just the language where we don't have, you know, I feel we definitely, I definitely agree with the mayor that this needs to be placed in the second year of the CIP. However, I'm really concerned on that there is no language or MOU in place in writing where we have found a home for the girls to play between now and that time. The other concern that I have is, I don't know, we could get the, is it Tina on the line? Because I would like to ask her, what is her preference on the field space? So I don't know, we could get, could we get Tina back? I see her on attendance, but I just wanted to hear what was her feedback on the, on the proposal that was presented. I wanted to hear, since she's one of the league's representatives on her preference on the different sites that have been presented. Is that a possibility to get her back on?
Let's, she should sit her back on. She's ready. Welcome back, Tina.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi. Hello. Thank you, Councilmember Dominguez. Yeah, as far as what we, when it was presented to us, we did take it back to our board. And I guess the main concern for us at Dixon was the parking. And then I think now with the modified versions of Cardoza, with the four field option, it definitely could be plausible for us to find a good fit there. Because now we essentially are gaining fields with lights, because the field, one of the fields at Cardoza is currently lit. And that is a field we often use. We would be using at these current times, you know, if it wasn't COVID, we'd be having practices now and preparing for the season. So we would be used, we use the lighted fields more around this time period just for practices because the daylight and then do night games as well. So, but so that's just based on what I've seen. I have my, this is the first time we've seen that plan drawn up. So it has not been presented to my board, so I wouldn't be able to speak on behalf of the league. But that's just me at a glance seeing it and this, you know, we're, our main goal is to have four fields in one location. It just makes it easier for preparation for games, for practices. And, you know, mainly our game, our weekend games, that's what our concern is, is having everybody in one location for weekends.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for the time and for hanging out. I really appreciate it. So yeah, definitely, I support the league with the Cardoza location. You know, again, I just, one of my concern is just what, what are they going to use between now and then? So I would like to see if we could move forward and, you know, find something. It sounds like they, it's gonna, you know, there is going to be a lot of challenges. But I would like to also place, I know that there's been a lot of conversations around this, the city partnering with the school district on different initiatives. One of the things that I would like to see is just making sure that we are partnering for this initiative as a priority. I do believe that the girls need a place to play. And before, one of the things that I would just ask is from staff, is that before we move into partnership with any other initiative, especially if it's fund related, I want to make sure that there is a specific plan for the girls to have a field between now and the time, you know, because we don't know when we're going to have the money. We hope that we could have the money in the next two years. But definitely continuing those conversations, because that, this is a priority. As one member, this is one of my priorities, because our community has expressed their needs for it. So definitely want to just note it for the record as we move through different conversations with the school district. The other thing that I had just wanted to know is, thank you so much for staff. I know that this year has been really challenging for all of us. And so I'll keep my comments short. And so thank you very much for all of you as we move through this challenging time. And that is all that I have to contribute at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's go with Rosie here. I think we got Rosie Zoom up to version. So welcome back, Rosie.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, City Council. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. Yes, I just wanted to comment on behalf of the softball community. I've been involved in softball community for, seems like forever now, coaching at the high school. Also been coaching at the recreational level, also co-founder of Milpitas Monsters. It is very important in our community, especially for creating confidence in young women. So this is a, I know we're all talking about budgets and finances. So this is a, this is an investment in our community. So I really do appreciate the city for stepping up. I did attend the last subcommittee meeting and I did feel like the school district kind of didn't want to be a part of it. I, I hope they will be, because like Karina Dominguez said, we need to have kind of that joint use agreement, especially for interim.
Thank you very much, Rosie. Appreciate it. All right. That's it with public comment here. Yeah, I just got to share in the discussion here with my colleagues and city staff and the public. You know, it's to my understanding that the school district is looking to dissolve the current MOU. Isn't that the MOU? It's the joint use agreement, JUA, yeah. I almost messed that one up. No, this is the school district, the school board. I think they're looking to dissolve the joint use agreement. And, you know, a lot of history there at those fields. It hurts. You know, I don't, I don't want to sit here and make it sound like I don't, I don't have emotions. You know, I've got a lot of memories back there. And, but this is kind of the next thing from Milpitas. But yeah, the school district is looking to dissolve the J, joint use agreement, JUA, so that they can go forward with their track and field, multi-use sports fields project back there. And, you know, it makes a lot of sense, I think. I think for me as one person, you know, there's really not much left there for our city. It's not even city property. I look forward to Cardoza. I mean, I'm just really looking forward. And so. And so, um, that's kind of the current state of things with the JUA back there. I think for our city to even hold on to it and try to resist, you know, resistance. Um, sure, that's great. I mean, we can do that, but what's the end goal? I mean, what are we really doing if we, um, weren't, uh, doing our part to have this community move along? We're not going to, I don't think we're going to save those softball fields forever. Um, the school district is doing kind of the same project over at Rancho. For both Russell and Rancho, the Wolverines and the Dons, each is getting a brand new track. Each middle school has never had a track in the history of our city. And they're, and they're both projected to get brand new tracks, multi-use sports fields for the first time in the city's history. And so, you know, for us to stop, uh, their project they have back there behind Russell. Well, Rancho is going to go forward and Rancho is going to have a track and field and multi-use fields and Russell won't. And so, another setback for those middle school students at my own water. So I'm just, um, you know, making these, uh, for one person as I am making these hard decisions, so. Um, you know, there's so much to think about, but, um, I'd love to think about what my colleagues have to say. Uh, next up, Vice Mayor Montano.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Um, yeah, this is a very touchy situation because this, our softball fields, well, actually Bobby Sox and the, uh, the PAL softball has been around for, since the nineteen seventies or sixties. And, um, I was really happy when Trish Dixon and, um, uh, Roger Lee, how they formed that partnership to open up the Bobby Six, Bobby Sox fields. And then, uh, we did have an agreement, a joint use agreement with the school district for the year 2032. We are in 2021. And we all know that the school district breached their contract, but we are not going to sue. We are going, we're working with them. And I'm hoping that the school district will continue to have a joint use agreement, but I haven't heard anything about that. To at least have the girls, uh, use the, continue to use the fields for practice. A lot of these girls are underprivileged, underserved, and this, and sports is so important for them because they gain confidence, they, they learn, uh, team skills. And not only that, they can get scholarships to go on to college. And those of you, uh, many of you know, college is so expensive. It's, if you're not in some kind, if you don't have the money or if you're not in some kind of, uh, sports, you're not going to get the ability to go on to college. So, uh, I would like for something to be done, something for these girls, something for the community. It is so important and I agree with councilmember Dominguez, we have to do something to make sure that these girls have the fields, uh, to play softball. It's so important. And I had, I don't know, uh, the city manager has shared with the other councilmembers, my memo that I did, that I wrote back in October, and this was, if the girls, if we can't find a, a place to possibly use to discuss the use of the, uh, McLannan's Park. That's, that's still up in the air and, and I'm, and I'm wondering, is that going to be with the lack of funds? Is that still in the works? Um, so all these questions come to my mind and we need, we need, if there's a will, there's a way. And that's what we have to do. We have to find a will. We have to find a way to make the, make, uh, create these fields for these girls. It's very important. So I just want to make, put that out there and we do need to have, continue to have a joint use agreement. It's very important because if we don't, our girls are going to be neglected and, uh, they'll just be neglected and another, you know, another one bites the dust kind of an attitude and that's not right. So I'm hoping that we can do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, and, you know, I think we're always going to do all we can here. It's just, what is it? So next up here, we have councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Chen. Uh, regarding the softball field, I do, I agree with everybody about the Cardoza, that would be a great option for the girls softball field. And also I'm concerned and also I agree with councilmember Dominguez and, and also Vice Mayor Montano, there's gotta be a joint use agreement. There's no way, I mean, if you use it and all of a sudden they need it for something else, the girls can be kicked out. And that's not the right way to do it. So we need to find somehow, um, mediation or whatever it is that we need to do to get a joint use agreement with MUSD. That's the bottom line, I think. In terms of the other issue on CIP, I would like to call on, um, Mr. Erickson again, please. I have a question on the overall CIP presentation.
Uh, yes, councilmember.
On page, uh, I think it's, um, you know, where you showed nineteen, I mean, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two? There's a graph that you showed and in twenty twenty, there's like, of course, we know there's a negative, uh, negative amount. I think it's page thirty-nine or thirty-eight.
The presentation, I think this is thirty-three, slide thirty-three?
Uh, just, can you show it then?
Yeah.
Please.
Slide IT, if we could, uh,
Yeah, government funding page.
IT, could we pull up the presentation, please? Okay, and then, uh, scroll down. I think it's slide thirty-three.
Thirty, yeah.
There we go.
There you go. Yes, that's the one. So can you tell me, this is, these projects were deferred? Uh, in twenty twenty, correct?
Correct.
So are they, any of these projects showing now for the twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yes, there's four projects, four of the twenty that were deferred, we're proposing to re-refund.
Where are they? Which one?
So this would be slide thirty-nine, if we could move forward on the presentation, please?
It's the five million, if I remember correctly, something about a total of five million.
Can we move forward on a slide, please? Please, slide thirty-nine? Okay, well, we have a total of four projects we're looking at, uh, refunding of, of the twenty that were deferred. There it is. And so, uh, thirty-four oh three, which is a fire station maintenance project. Uh, thirty-four fifty-nine and thirty-four sixty-four, which are police and, uh, our police department, uh, emergency service projects, as well as forty-two sixty-seven, which is a sound wall and barrier repair project.
Isn't the thirty-four fifty-nine the all first, security cameras, the funding should come from a grant? Oh, okay, it's right there.
Yes.
So the rest are coming from the general, the CIP fund?
So for thirty-four oh three, two hundred and fifty thousand is coming from the general government fund.
Hmm.
Uh, thirty-four sixty-four has several funding sources, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, uh, is grant. Eight, about eight hundred and fifty thousand is general fund and another a hundred and sixty-one is equipment replacement fund. And then forty-two sixty-seven, uh, we're proposing a hundred thousand from general government fund.
Very good. Okay, can we go back to that, uh, graph again with the red, uh, with the, so, yes, that one. So, this is, so if I subtract, so how much is the one that the four projects? Is, how much is out of this five point six? How much is the four projects? I missed that one.
Well, this year, we're, the funding, hold on here.
We can move to the, to slide thirty-nine again. So it's eight, uh,
This is the big chunk of the twenty projects.
So this year, uh, of these four projects, we're looking at funding, uh, one point two million dollars roughly from the general fund.
Ah, okay, that's good. I like that. Um, what about, go back to, uh, page thirty-eight, please? Um, not this one, the one before this one, I think? Oh, where is that at? Hmm. I just want to show the one that I requested, the chart.
Yes.
And I like that. Thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it.
Slide thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay. Okay, I requested this one to you and Ashwini and I'm really very happy about this. Because I was concerned about funding, funding all this project, the twenty-two million. And I was wondering if we even touching the reserve. When, when I saw your presentation tonight and you showed this chart, really pleasantly happy and surprised. That out of the CIP projects, we're not touching, we're not touching the reserve. And thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Well done. Thank you.
Fantastic, fantastic. Uh, thank you very much, councilmember Chua. And next up here, we have councilmember Fan.
Um, the pedestrian overpass, that's, uh, that's done, right?
No, that project's in construction still. Uh, it's anticipated to be completed this April.
So far, um, I, I just want to make a note, though, it, it looks amazing. If any of you guys have ever been, uh, by that area, um, that's really, I think, going to be a huge part of the image of Milpitas, the whole image of the whole metro area. You know, I, I'd really love for us to capitalize on that and really include that in, you know, our marketing and promotional material. Um, you know, because it's, it's really something that we want to highlight to other, uh, folks, especially people coming into Milpitas. That it's, it's worth the investment, you know, it's the place to be. Um, and I'm so excited, um, you know, to see it, uh, come to, uh, completion. Very grateful for the, uh, private, um, uh, stakeholders that are involved, uh, because I know that, you know, this is, uh, something that, um, is the work of a public-private kind of, um, funding structure. Um, and we see, you know, successful projects like that. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that, um, we continue to think about funding structures like that. Or just a, um, diverse, um, fun, funding sources for, uh, the, the many projects that we have. When I look at projects like the, I guess, the, the Cardoza, um, uh, field, um, have, have we considered, um, a, making a, uh, special, um, taxing district, uh, to, to fund that? Myself, just like, you know, the rest of us, we, we wanted to have the funding source and obviously we want it sooner than later, um, although of course there are, you know, these economic, um, conditions that are the harsh realities of the, the COVID economy. Uh, but, you know, i- is that an option that we, we looked at?
Councilmember Fan, we have not yet. Uh, we can definitely look at what are the funding sources. Right now, we've just been kind of looking at conceptual design and preliminary costs, so we don't even have quite a cost estimate yet.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Yeah, considering that we're identifying it, you know, uh, in, in a, in a future, um, year. Um, we, we have time to plan around that, so I, I'm not too focused on that. Um, but, but it seems that we're, we're all in agreement that, you know, that, that's the location. That, that said, um, I, I do want to make the rest of the conversation, uh, about the rest of the CIP projects. Um, so I, um, will yield the rest of, um, my time to my colleagues.
Thank you so much, councilmember Fan. Really like it. And, uh, for those of my colleagues that still have their virtual raised hands up. We really appreciate if you can lower your virtual raised hand. Ahem. I, um, yeah, I, I do want to, uh, kind of trying to put a direction to what we're doing tonight on a couple of things. So with the softball program, the legendary softball program of Milpitas, Bobby Sox, PAL. Um, yeah, let's, let's do a, let's do a MOU with, um, uh, between the city and the softball program to ensure that we have our city always doing everything we can to provide a field. Uh, we do have fields existing at Dixon and, um, the sports center, uh, you know, just for temporary use sort of a thing. And so if it makes it any better for peace of mind, I always stress peace of mind. We all need peace of mind and so peace of mind is very valuable. And so if it, uh, brings any peace of mind in the interim, we, we can do it. You know, I propose, uh, really in support of what I've been hearing tonight, um, an MOU between the city and the, um, Bobby Sox, so that, um, we can really know that there's going to be fields for them in the interim as we head towards building a Cardoza softball complex, which will be amazing. I, um, I do want to, uh, also really talk about the CIP and what it means for our city. Um, I think, uh, the bigger picture for us all to really think about, I hope, is Measure F and our, um, temporary sales tax increase, incremental increase at that. Uh, we have, uh, eight years here as a city. Whether I'm still here in office or I'm not in office, or if councilmember Fan or, uh, councilmember Chua, who have four years ahead of them. You know, I, whoever, city manager, whoever, city staff, uh, whoever's going to be here over these next eight budgets. Uh, you all have been really blessed with the, uh, Measure F. And I think our city should run Measure F all through eight years. And to really be efficient and maximize those pennies, quarter pennies. Uh, and so that, that's really a huge thing with the CIP. I think, um, as I look down on it tonight and, and all our budgets as well tonight, we're talking about the CIP budget, so. Um, every project that this council is going to approve over the next eight CIPs, um, you know, make sure they're all good ones. And I think tonight, we have opportunity to approve our first CIP, but, uh, well, not approve, let me, let me slow down. Yeah, I know, see the city manager, yeah, I'm getting carried away. Um, but, oh, tonight, we have the opportunity to take the first step, uh, towards approving, um, this CIP. It's, it's, it's really quite, it's really quite an honor to, to be a public servant tonight. Considering the tremendous challenges that we're facing in our society and in our lives, so. Um, I think tonight, I hope we all walk away knowing that this is the first budget, uh, CIP, at least where we have, you know, Measure F and going for these eight years. These next eight years are going to be critical for every city in America. And, um, you know, here in Milpitas, we're blessed to have the resources and the community support. Um, to make, and continue to make this city, uh, an amazing place, um, with our CIP. Um, and we're talking about our streets and things. These are all things we're all very proud of, so. I'm going to go to my colleagues, but those are my last words for tonight and, uh, we'll see what other feedback we have and let's be mindful of the time. We got a lot of meetings coming up here, folks, going forward. Let's make sure we pace ourselves. Uh, next up here, councilor Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor, um, for your consideration and, um,
Thank you very much, Mayor, um, for your consideration, and, um, I do love and will be supporting, um, your request, um, that's been brought to us about writing a memo. Um, however, one of the things that I would also like to ask my colleagues is that there is no termination of the current MOU that I believe runs till twenty thirty-two, until we see the new MOU and the new MOU is approved. Um, so I want to make sure that staff does not move forward with the termination of the current, um, what is it called? Joint use agreement? Um, until the, a new joint use agreement is brought forward, and if we could, please have a, a copy of that MOU with, um, with the original investments that were money, uh, that original money investments that was made from the city, um, to the unified, uh, Milpitas Unified School District. Um, just so you could give us a good idea, the historical, I know, Vice Mayor Carmen Montano, you, um, you're full of knowledge, and so I just want to understand it a little better, so if you could help me through that process, I would really appreciate it. Um, but again, I think it's just gonna help us with these conversations, um, and I believe that um, this would provide that protection, uh, for our softball girls, uh, to know that there is gonna be a home, that, that's the commitment that I do foresee having between all of us. And that, um, I do believe that's, uh, middle ground to everything that I have heard, um, from the mayor, along with my colleagues, and so, um, if that's something that we could include in your original, uh, proposal, Mayor, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. It's for our Assistant City Manager, Ashwini.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Dominguez. We just wanted to make sure we uh, are clear on the direction we're getting. So the JUA, of course, is with the school, and we were actually gonna come back with an amendment to the JUA with kind of changes, because they will still have fields. And given the limited open space, we really want to look at maximizing joint use opportunities, so we were planning to bring that back to the council at some point in the future. In terms of the MOU, Mayor, I think you were asking for an MOU with the softball group, and I, I mean, we do have a lot of different youth groups, sports groups, and we don't have MOUs with them, so just want to make sure we understand, uh, is it just for the interim use that you wanted an MOU so they have some guarantee about that, um, that we will, I think, before Cardoza comes online?
Yeah, absolutely. I do want to say the first, uh, of, of what you said, I, I'm actually, um, very um, in agreement in terms of maximizing, uh, kind of any JUA over there at that location, so that was, you nailed it, thank you. And then the latter, um, yeah, absolutely, um, an MOU, even though it would be new or different, uh, than other sports groups, um, uh, for this one, you know, we, we can take the extra steps because it's a community that we very deeply care about.
Okay, thank you. And we did present to you today, kind of what we think is, we have some funding for, and so Dixon, since it already has four fields, I know parking's an issue, and we'll manage through that, uh, council approved that parking policy at Parks, um, so you know, hopefully that will help us manage the parking issue there, but we do have funding to make some interim improvements, so until Cardoza comes online, we'll be able to have that open, um, for, for, uh, their use.
Absolutely, yeah, that, that's great. Um, and, you know, I know cricket is a very popular sport as well for the interim. If we're gonna spend money on, uh, any type of field improvements, um, you know, if we can incorporate the cricket over there too, to maximize our dollars here that are being spent, that'd be great. But only if softball's first, or, okay.
And in fact, the, the, uh, one you saw at Cardoza also provides us with some opportunities for multi-use, the four-field option in the center, so that's, really in the future.
Great, great. I can see a future music festival there, yeah. Okay, great. Uh, back to the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Carmen Montana. Okay, raise hands down. Okay.
I'm a multitask, I'm multitasking, so, so I lost my train of thought, so I'll come back to you.
All good, all good. Hey, it's okay, you know what, you can come back to me at the next meeting if you want. All right, let's go to our colleagues here. Are there any other further comments? It's okay, we got another meeting, folks, um. Okay, that's, okay, great, great, great. I do want to, um, go in this direction here to our city manager, uh, Steve McHarris. Is that all the feedback and?
Okay, I know what I wanted to say now.
Okay, great. Let's go to the Vice Mayor.
Sorry about that. Um, so, so I'd like, uh, the softball teams to meet with Renee, uh, just to make sure that they, just to have that communication, because I, I just feel that there's, they're not, there's a gap somewhere, so I, I'd like, uh, them to meet with Renee, the director. And, um, also, not, and not a MOU, but a JUA, joint use agreement is what we need, not a MOU, because the, the MOU is just a memorandum of understanding. A JUA is, it, it's binding, so we need to make sure that we have a JUA, not, not a MOU, just make that clear.
Well, we're, we're doing both. We're doing both. We're into the JUA with the school district and the MOU with the softball program, uh, and so, those are the appropriate channels. I do want to also take a moment to thank staff, even in the presentation that we received tonight about the softball fields. Uh, we all saw the options, the interim temporary options, the bridge options for our softball program, so staff was on top of that. I do want to give kudos and recognize that staff was on top of that, and so, um, I know that, uh, our city staff will do a fine job connecting with the softball programs, needless to be said. Yeah, if, yeah, needless to say, okay, great, that's how I see it. Uh, I want to go, Councilmember Fan here with the virtual reason.
Um, you know, I, I'm not an attorney, obviously, so I don't really know, uh, the, the technical uh, differences between a MOU and a J, what, what do you call it? Joint use agreement? J, JUA? Okay, um, I, I would, uh, imagine that a, a joint use agreement would require the other party to also agree to it. Right?
Right.
Yeah, so I think that, that's where some of the, the, the constraint might be. You know, it, if, if we can't come to an agreement, then you just have, you know, a one-sided piece of paper, a document, which I guess, in effect, would be similar to a, an MOU. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it to staff, um, to assess that, um, scenario, but at the end of the day, you know, you, we can only go so far if, you know, other, um, stakeholders aren't on board. Our hands are kind of tied there. You know, we, we can try to, you know, come, keep going back to the drawing board and coming up with a, a, a better agreement, if you will, but at some point, you know, i- if they're a hard no, they're, they're still gonna be a hard no. Um, so, a- 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 at the end of the day, I think what we're all looking for is, um, something that memorializes, uh, a, a commitment, so I would defer that to staff to decide the best route, but I, I wouldn't want to, um, go into a lengthy, uh, debate as to what kind of, uh, document, um, that would entail. But that, that said, um, there's no further debate. Um, I, I, may I call the question?
Uh, let me check in first with our Director of Engineering, Mr. Erickson. Hey, Mr. Erickson, how's that feedback for you? Is it good?
Yeah, that's good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Councilmember Fan.
So I'll, I'll move approval of, um, the recommendations with, um, the feedback from the council.
Actually, let me stop. We don't, we don't need to make a motion, we're just receiving it. Yeah, so, yeah.
And then we, okay. I can just add a little bit to the discussion, just to, um, let the council know, yes, a JUA as well as an MOU, they're both agreements. Um, but if the, the council would be willing to give staff just a little bit of room, and we'll make a recommendation on which, when we think works better, and there may be a better option out there, so just, I would just ask, give us a little bit of flexibility, but we'll make a recommendation, and the council could direct us, um, once we come back to you in a public meeting.
Fantastic. That's great. All right, folks, I'm, let's, um, yeah, go ahead.
Vice Station Mayor, so, um, Chris, does that mean that, uh, we still, it'll come back to us and we'll still be discussing whether to the girls can, or not just the girls, but any other team can still use the fields? And then we'll be able to, uh, that's what Ashwini was referring to, right, to some kind of an amendment, right?
That's exactly correct. As our Assistant, as our Assistant City Manager said, yes, we'll come back to you. The amendment to the original JUA will need to occur, and then if there's additional, um, agreements that we have with other parties, we'll bring that back to as well.
Okay, that's, that sounds fair. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, I want to ask, uh, before we adjourn the meeting, I just want to say, everybody, stay dry, be safe, check the tires on your vehicle. Vehicle inspection is key, your windshield wipers, your tires. You know, when's the last time you changed your oil or your brakes? Everybody, please be safe. Uh, it will be raining, and so, uh, Councilmember Fan, if you can make a motion to adjourn the meeting, I want to second it.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor, virtual roll call. This, you know what, we gotta do the virtual, okay, Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Aye.
Myself as an aye, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Anthony.